Well, we keep it secret, she is, so we wouldn't know.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Citrus County School Board meeting. My name is Doug Dodd. I'm the chairman of the school board. And at this time, I'm going to call our regular scheduled meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May the 8th, 2018. The time is 4:09 in the afternoon. I want to draw your attention. If you have the agenda, I want to mention to you now that we had an administrative hearing at 3 o'clock. We also had a closed session to discuss some safety and security items. That is confidential. We did not, however, deal with anything with the school resource officer contract and any negotiations about anything dealing with the school resource officer. So I want to make sure the public is clear on that. We will have a discussion on that in this meeting during our agenda. It is on the agenda, and we will be having some discussions on that. We're going to go to our opening exercises. And this month, the opening exercise is Mrs. Powers. You have opened it today, so I'm going to turn it over to the Honorable Linda Powers.
Good morning, Ms. Donnie Brown, Principal of Crystal River Primary School. And those guests that you brought with you come up. Yes, they're going to show us the grass. And explain to us, there's going to be an honor coming up also for y'all, some of the states, so you'll mention that.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us.
You need to switch there.
All right, good afternoon, and thank you for having us. We brought toys. So the first thing that we're showing you is our Rockstar Eelgrass. Again, this is our second year. We're expanding on our project. And this has been made possible through a very generous grant from Duke Energy. And we've worked in cooperation with Save Crystal River. We also have, where did our lingvia, our? Oh, here it is. So we're going to ask you to shake that up. And then as it goes around, you'll see it changing. Takes a few minutes. So some of the things that we've done differently this year with our grant is we've been able to purchase some filters for the Rockstar Eelgrass farms that are in all of our classrooms, pre-K through 5th grade. We've also been able to purchase this toy that we're going to be using to test the water. It's a water tester. Goes in the water, plugs into the computer, and we get to have all kinds of findings about the cleanliness of the water, the solidity of the water, to see whether it's making a difference with our Rockstar Eelgrass. Boys, boys, come on up with me. This is Hingis Bach. This is Brian Hingis Bach. He has been the lead teacher on this project. Through the funding that Grant, that Duke Energy gave us, we have been able to pull teachers together outside of contract time and pay them to write curriculum for K through 5 that we hope to be able to share with other schools in our district. So our students have learned about the hydraulic process for the dredging that Gator dredging has been doing out in the river. They have learned about the lingvia. And then they've learned about this polymer that's in the jar. As you can see, and I don't know if the audience can see this as well, but how the sediment has settled to the bottom. Water on top is what they then pull out and put back into the river. So they're cleaning the water and then replacing the dirty water with clean water out in the river. So that's how that works. So we are excited to invite all of you, and any of the public would be welcome, to Hunter Springs on May 18th. Our 5th graders, our tradition now is that our 5th graders will take all of the Rockstar grass that we've grown this year and literally go out into the river and plant it. Mrs. Hemel has had a piece last year that got planted.
And it's big.
We're also very excited that Tracy Berger, who's the Director of Programs for the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations, it's a mouthful, will be attending this event at 10:30 on May 18th at Hunter Springs. She is really interested in the STEM connection and all of the different activities that connect to STEM through this project. So we hope to see many of you there. We've invited the local as well as state legislators to join us. The Chronicle is usually very good about giving us coverage. And if you'd like to join Mrs. Hemel in planting some grass, wear the appropriate clothes, we'll let you get in the water and plant the grass. Mr. Hingis Bach, anything you want to add?
You know, it's just a great way to teach responsible stewardship to the kids because it's hand-on, they're building connections right there, our own community. They're a great partner with all the different groups, Save Crystal River, Duke Energy. And they said there are going to be a lot of grass too, so we'll have more to plant. So it's going to be a lot of fun. We love to have kind of people out there.
Excellent. And thank you for supporting us in this project for the last two years. We appreciate it.
And if you would, just, you know, have some little metal skid. Mr. Dodd got these to recognize people who do so much with schools, so I'm coming around to put them on. And this, this is Brian, this is Hingis Bach.
He's shy. He hides back there.
Can I get a picture of you guys?
Yeah, it's a great one. I've never won anything before.
He's a tremendous swimmer, so.
Wow. You're a wal.
He's legendary.
I'm not as good as I once was, but I did once.
The leaders of the flag of the United States of America, and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers, I thank Crystal River Primary School. I do have some changes for the agenda I want to make sure the board is aware of before we go to the adoption agenda. If you would, on page 2, our presentation of National Merit Scholarship participants will occur after 5:00 PM due to testing. Those students are testing right now, so we'll do that. And we are also going to postpone the Citrus County Education Foundation presentation for today. And then finally, we would like to move, or the superintendent has asked to move Section 7 Finance to go before Section 6 School Support Services. And for time's sake, that will be a change that I'll recommend that we go with that. We're going to basically switch Items 6 and 7. Does anyone have any concerns with any of these? Okay, is there a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda?
Move adoption of the agenda as recommended with those changes recommended by the chairman.
Okay, motion. Mr. Kenny, second by Ms. Counts to approve the adoption of the agenda with the changes as mentioned. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next on our agenda, Item Number 2, Citizen Comments. Are there any cards or any green cards for Citizen Comments? Okay, okay. Just want to make sure our audience knows there will be another opportunity for comments at the end of business as well as a time certain at 5:15. Okay, we're going to move on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I need to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. I would like to make a note on the consent agenda that we just approved. There was an item with the agreement between the school board and the YMCA, and Joanna Castle and David Reed are both here. And I would certainly afford you an opportunity if you would like to say anything to the board, but we have approved that item, so we appreciate your attendance at the meeting.
I'm Joanna Castle, I'm just Vice President of the Y. And I just want to say thank you. We look forward to another three years helping serve the students and the teachers and administration and everyone in our community who uses the Y services. Truly a privilege for us to be involved and supporting our community and are welcoming the next opportunity for three more years. Have a nice.
Thank you very much.
I said, "Fix this with the Y's that people in other states can make them jealous."
I appreciate that.
You know, the YMCA has contributed to our school system. It continues, though, to contribute to the economy of Citrus County because anybody has rolled through the four corners there, it's a new four corners than what we've been used to. People think it's 44 and 491. I don't think so anymore. I think it's 46 and 491. We've got a new Wendy's, we've got a new McDonald's, we have the Walmart there, we have a Wawa's coming. And really, the Y, I spend a lot of time going after a swim meet over from there to playing to those establishments and giving to those to our community. Thank you for also taking care of our kids because you take care of them after school, before school, you take care of them during the summers, you take care of them during hurricanes, and we just appreciate you partnering with this community. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I know. Thank you. We would like to recognize our donations. And Ms. Berardi?
This is the board member.
Okay. If you could get the lighter for me.
Lovely.
Okay.
And board members, the following donations were approved on the consent agenda. The donation of one guitar value of $5,000 to Crystal River Elementary School from donors. The donation of $800 to HomeSense Elementary School from West City House Ladies. Approved the donation, $1,800 donation to Inmanus Middle School from Gold and Diamond Exchange. Approved the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Sunnyland Corporation. Approved the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Alana Webb. Approved the $625 donation to Citrus High School from Sunnyland Corporation. Approved the $625 donation to Citrus High School from Perry J. Approved the $30,000 donation to McCamper High School from SoDoo Fishing Beer LLC. Approved the $5,000 donation to McCamper High School from Community Foundation of Camper. Approved the $1,000 donation to McCamper High School from Joyce and Robert Shawin. Approved the $1,000 donation to Crest from the Rotary Club of the River. Approved the $1,500 donation to the New Science Station for Citizens of the Water Sports. Approved the $10,800 donation to Paul Schultz for the Paul Schultz Foundation of the Foundation of Paul Schultz. And approved the $9,999.99 donation to Paul Schultz for the Rafferty Great Scholarship Fund. That is a total of $64,698.99.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Adele. That's very good news. We have a very supportive community, and we appreciate these donations. And there's a lot of work that goes on in our schools, a lot of great community support. And I know Mrs. Hemel has done a great job with building that, and it sure certainly goes when we see this kind of monetary contribution, so we appreciate that from all of our donors. Okay, we're going to move on to presentation, and the superintendent's making a difference, board.
Before I recognize Peyton for a couple of her accomplishments, she was able to babysit one evening for my only grandchild, who was adorable. And I'm out, and I get a text from her because she got my grandbaby to walk, and she was more excited about it than I was. But it was fun. Today, we'd like to recognize Peyton Burnett. She is a junior student athlete at McCamper High School, has been selected to represent McCamper High School, Citrus County Schools, and the Florida High School Athletic Association at the National Federation of State High School Associations Summer National Student Leadership Summit. This summit will be held in Indianapolis, Indiana in July. This summit is designed to sharpen student leadership skills and learn how those skills can influence your school and community. We'd like to say congratulations to Peyton because, of course, we're very proud of her for what she does for our schools, for the representing students throughout the community, and always making Citrus County schools look really good. She was also recognized the other night at the United Way Dinner for the Sean Harrison Outstanding Youth Service Award. So Peyton, on behalf of myself, school members, and the entire school district, thank you for what you do, and we know that one day that we will see you accomplish many, many things, but students like you certainly give us hope for the future, so thank you for what you do.
They all want to support me today. My cross-country team and my cross-country coach and soccer coach.
Coach Town. Coach been there.
Oh, if my mom is here. I don't know if you know her. She works for education.
They all want to squeeze in or turn sideways. I see the cars to take charge. This way places, there you go. It's like push-in. Push-in.
Peyton, as you also represent on FSBA, I'm sorry, on Florida High, on FHSAA, don't forget that we still have a little issue that there was the first female football coach in Florida that is yet to be recognized, and that's the Superintendent Hemel at Crystal River Middle School. So do we get on that? We appreciate that. We know we can trust you, Ms. Peyton. Take care.
If they want to recognize, it's been Indianapolis all the way.
And Peyton, since you're only a junior, you'll be back with us next year, and maybe it would be great for you to come to one of the meetings with all of our coaches or something and talk about what you're going to learn at the National Federation of High Schools in Indianapolis. And we know that's an expensive paid trip by the Florida Athletic Association, so it's a great honor for you to be chosen, and it's a great honor for our county to be represented. So congratulations. And thank all of these students in Coach Town for coming here today to support, show that support. Okay, as chairman's privilege, the presentation section now, I would like to publicly thank our board secretary, Ms. Linda Berardi. And we have brought some flowers, but we just love you, we appreciate you, and I think the board members may want to say a few words, but I'd like to have a standing ovation for this student. This is Linda's last friend in with us. She's retiring after a stellar career of 34 years, and she's kept this board straight for many, many years. And the district has done some thanks for her, but we just want to thank you. And Linda, if you would like to say a few words, we'd love to have you say a few words, if you'd like, to us. It's your decision.
I just want to say that I have many blessings in my life, that God has really blessed me with this wonderful team that I have the honor of working with, talking with the superintendent, the school board, and our executive staff, and our school board attorney. And I tell you, y'all are one of my blessings, and it's a joy for this whole district to be able to have a wonderful career.
Linda, I just want to tell you, I'll try not, it's a joke, but you are the sunshine in our lives every day when we come to work. You are the encourager whenever we walk into this DSC. You've been a confidential friend, when all of us want to be your confidential friend. But more importantly, you have made this school district a better place for kids, and we cannot thank you enough for your service. Thank you.
And I remember all your help as a classroom teacher and communicating with this group of people. You were always professional, you were always made confident, you've always made me feel very, very comfortable as the newest member on this board. And we're going to miss you a lot. But your grandchildren deserve you, there's a nice man sitting behind you that's smiling, smiling right to the top, so well-earned retirement. We're going to be, we're going to miss you.
And Linda, I want to say, anytime you talk about a child, anytime you mention a child's name, in your voice comes that warmth that carries that love. And I notice that all the time about you, you really honestly do care, and thank you, Linda.
Being the oldest board member, I mean, I've been here the longest. I've been here the longest number of years. I just love you, Linda, and I'm going to miss you terribly. I'll be short and sweet, because she's crying, then I'll be crying, volleyball. I told a group the other day that the Bible talks about being kindness, and Linda certainly represents that more than anyone I know.
All right. And thank you all, and thank you, Linda, we love you, and you've been a marvelous drive. Okay, we're going to move on to Item Number 5, our educational services. We have Scott Hebert, Mr. Hebert, Dr. Hebert's here. First item, A, approval of the memorandum of understanding between Citrus County School Board and Nova Southeastern University. We, yeah, we took that off.
I'm here to ask for approval of the MOU between Citrus County School Board and Nova Southeastern University on behalf of the Abram Fisher College of Education and National University Stanford Education Center, which is Stanford Inspire.
I pulled this, and I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, if I can, to approve Items 5, A and B, approval of the memorandum of understanding between Citrus County School Board and Nova Southeastern University for both the Stanford Inspire and the Sanford
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kenny, second by Ms. Counts, to approve the memorandum of understanding between Citrus County School Board and Nova Southeastern University on behalf of Abram Fisher College of Education and National University Stanford Education Center, Stanford Inspire.
And I just pulled this because I thought this was an awesome situation, and it was exciting to me. We learned about this program from an old friend of the school board, Rick Roach, who's a former school board member from Orange County, was a dear friend of Pat Deutschman, is known kind of throughout the country as a school board member who said, "You know what? Kids are being tested too much, and I'm going to see what this whole FCAP thing's about." And so he petitioned the state as a school board member, took the FCAP. He did not pass it. And so he talked about the challenges. He was, by the way, a doctoral candidate, and Mr. Hebert can tell you a little bit about what that involves. But here's where these things become such good stuff. Rick Roach shared this, and the superintendent said, "Yeah, that's something I'd like to see our staff look into." And Ms. Lindy and Ms. Kit gave it the once-over, to say the very least. They really looked at this program in depth and saw that not only was it extremely valuable to this district, but as a result of the training, the depth of information in it, this would have been a very expensive program for this district to have purchased on its own, and we are going to get this program for free. And that is through an endowment, and I just could not let it go by on a consent item to not say thank you to the superintendent, to the educational services team, Lindy, Kit, and Rick Roach for bringing this forward, because this is going to be good for our district, it's going to save money, and it's just all around a great thing. So that's really why I just wanted to make sure we knew about it.
It's super high quality. It's like saying, "We're in the Senate, you Harvard teaches them the work we got to do." It's excellent.
That's it.
All right, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed, all right, motion passes 5-0. Item B.
I'd like to ask for approval of the Achieved 3,000 Site Licenses for the intensive reading students at our four middle schools and three high schools for the 2018, 2019 school year.
All right, Mr. Hebert, I've called for Item B.
I did, I did A and B.
I'm sorry. So we approved both Stanford Inspire and Sanford Harmony. Let the record show that I only talked about A, so we did approve both Harmony and Inspire. Okay, very good. So I pulled the Achieved 3,000 Site Licenses because I just want to get a good understanding for the board on this literacy program. Obviously, we're spending over $100,000 for this, but literacy and reading is very important, as we all know, and I just wanted to get a little description on the programs at our high schools and middle schools that are participating, and just a general overview of the program, please.
I've asked Mr. Rowland to come, so he's going to share that information.
Good afternoon. Achieved 3,000 is a curriculum and instructional tool that we use in English Language Arts classes and reading courses at the middle and high school. We started a, we did a trial last summer and exposed some of our teachers to it and let them review the program. It's research-based, it's data-based, a lot of other counties throughout the state of Florida, or I should say, some other counties around the state of Florida are using it. And the data that they've been receiving from the program, student learning has increased. And the data that they've been receiving from the program, student learning has increased. Again, we use it for level, we used it this last year for Level 1 and Level 2 students at the secondary level. The implementation has gone very well. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to afford this or find this for the upcoming school year, and the more we put, we talked to our administrators about it, the more we talked to our teachers about it, they said they really want it. If you can do anything, we'll be willing to give up something else if we can have this program. So I just want to show you a few slides with a little bit of data from the program this year. And I have Ms. Harris, one of our literacy coaches, she's here today if there's any specific questions about the implementation that you want to ask our literacy coaches at each of the schools that have been using that to help guide our teachers in the use of it. There's just a simple description of Achieve 3000, differentiated literacy solutions platform, rate appropriate content at each student's individual reading level. I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a moment. What are the advantages of using Achieve 3000? It was a tool, again, that they use in the classroom that takes a lesson to that student's level, allows the teacher to teach at a high level of rigor, but it brings the literacy materials down to their level. So when the students read it, they all read at whatever their level is, but when the teacher has that discussion or that small group instruction, they can have it at a higher level of rigor, because it's not the literacy skills that's preventing them from having that discussion. And that's one of the things that they really like. It makes the teacher's job easier because it's a tool for individualizing that instruction, it allows them to do small group instruction. And one of the things that they did give up to get this at the secondary level was FastBridge. Currently, we use FastBridge for a progress monitoring tool, but we felt like Achieve 3000 would allow us to do progress monitor at the same level as FastBridge, so we had a little bit of a cost savings there. Here's just the overall look at the data. We had seven schools using it this year, over 2,000 students, and we had an actual mean Lexile growth of 94.4 points. And just to give you a simplistic definition of Lexile, it measures the complexity of vocabulary and lengths of sentences and lengths of the passages. And also, I'll just show you this slide right here. The blue is the expected Lexile growth for a student for a year in the different grade levels. You can see sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, and tenth, and then you can actually see the Lexile growth that has occurred with those students that were using that program. So, for example, in sixth grade, you see that that says 69 points is the expected growth, we had 143. In seventh, 63, we had 86, and so forth, and so on. There's also a measurement that measures college-ready. Of those students that were Level 1 and 2, we had 9% of those students scored at a level that said that they were college and career-ready, and by this April, we had 18.4%. So the program is producing a lot of quality data. We're going to do a correlation as soon as we get the FSA data back to see if the data that we received on Lexile growth matches with the FSA. But I know our teachers are liking it, they feel like it's making a difference with instruction, it's making it easier with instruction. I know in our schools, they're exploring, when we buy these licenses, every teacher at the school has a license, but only a certain number of students have it. Our social studies at some schools and science at other schools are going to utilize this program in their classes. So they're going to take topics in science and topics in social studies and bring it down to that student's reading level, so they can have those higher-level conversations to those students. So a lot of excitement about the program, and we're appreciative and hopeful that we get this in for the next school year. I think it's going to make a difference.
Mr. Rowland, or the executive team, too, is, I know that there are some schools that wanted this program so badly, that I know I started asking a lot more questions about it when one of the SACS said they were going to spend three-quarters of all of their budget, because they believed so much in the need for their school to have this program. So I'm hoping that by you having this budget request, that this means, or this purchase request, that this means they'll not have to use that money then? Would that be correct?
That would be correct. And that was part of it. When we got out of this last school year, I was very clear up front that, you know, there's not a re-incurring budget for this, so don't really plan on it, or if you want to use it, think about ways that you could fund it. So our schools were looking to give up this, that, and the other, and programs that were, or things that were important to them also. So that's why it let us know that this is very important to our schools.
And that's what I was going to say. When a school is willing to, when an administration is willing to say, "Listen, I'm going to put my, our school enhancement money on the line because we believe so much in this," then it starts to get a lot of attention in my eyes. I also liked coming from a husband of a reading teacher, that it really did, one of the concerns we often have, as much as I love technology, is the teacher needs to be at the center of that classroom instruction. And this is a product that, at the end of the day, the teacher is at the center of this lesson. So I really appreciated that aspect of this particular program, so you'll have my support.
I've got a question in regards to the Boost Access and Spanish Solutions. Is that, that didn't give us a count on how many students can access that? Is that, is there?
That would be for all the students to have a license. So if the licenses were 375 students, then all 375 students would have access to Boost and Espanola. It's very interesting, I actually tried to separate that out as far as the cost. I'm like, we used it, but we didn't use it that extensively, and basically, it's part of the program. They can't separate it out, so they're just adding a different cost to make it look like you're getting extra, just to be honest with you.
So this 102,000, is that the total cost?
Total cost for all seven schools.
And will it be repeated next year?
This is a one-year license.
Right.
And...
If you want to make sure, we've got to come up with the same amount.
Correct. They actually, they came in with a much higher price. This is actually lower than what they charged us last year. Last year was a supposed introductory price, but when they came in with a really high number, we were not, we didn't like that number, and we negotiated a little bit, so we got it back down to less than what we paid last year.
And so the cloud-based system that they talk about in here, is that just they're online, and they're doing programs online, or is there actually things that they can do at home, online? Can you explain that?
Yeah, I mean, yes, the student can access it from home. Do you want to step up and explain just a little bit?
Basically, there is an entire ability for the child to search any of their interest levels, and they can access those while they're at home. So if the kid wants to learn about X media, or news, or swimming, or cars, they can go home, read the article, complete the activities at home, and continue their reading while they're at home, as well as an officer.
And it's going to be at their level, correct?
Yes.
And so it's always kind of, that literacy rate as they go, it's going to increase as they show proficiency.
They have to score 75% or higher on each of their, they call it the activity, it's just a fancy name for multiple choice questions. So they have to perform a 75 or higher, and they have to agree with at least four activities per month in order to qualify for a Lexile adjustment.
Ms. Harris, how does it look like in the classroom setting when this is being used? Because I've heard, seen it described either as small group at times, whole group, individual. What might that look like?
I think that's the most phenomenal part about Achieve 3000, is the fact that it's really not an online program. And as an instructional coach, I tell all the teachers, it's not an online program. It is simply a textbook that provides nonfiction on an online platform. Once it's in the teacher's hands, the adaptability of it is endless. Currently, right now, as Mr. Rowland alluded to, I am creating a cross-curricular map timeline based on social studies and science, so that teachers in, regardless of the classroom, can work with the ELA teacher or the science teacher, and it can be in small group, it can be as a modeling tool, it can be as a peer-to-peer. It's even in my favorite application of it, it's called an expert. And what they do is they pick a subject, and they go through and they read five articles on that subject, and they have to maintain that 75 or higher on each of the articles, and they become a master in that subject, and then they create a project based on that subject. So it can be used for base projects, it can be used for small group, differentiated instruction, teacher-led, fun time, it's really, it's endless, that's the best part of it. It's not a program at all.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I move that we approve Achieve 3000 site licenses for the intensive reading students at our four middle school and three high schools for the 2018-2019 school year.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Powers, to approve the Achieve 3000 site licenses for the 2018-2019 school year. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Rowland. Okay, we're going to move this section, we moved finance to section six, and we have item number Q. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I ask for you to approve the disposal of active surplus property at La Canto Middle School.
All right, Ms. Powers, you've pulled it, so...
I want to know the steps taken.
And I think Mr. Sheffield's here from La Canto Middle.
I want to know the steps taken from when something disappears, when it's put on the list, lost, stolen, whatever, then it's given to the district service center, just a running account of what happens.
Mr. Sheffield's here from La Canto Middle, Dr. Connors from Crystal River High School.
Good afternoon.
Are you referring to the iPads or anything in iPads in general? Basically, me being my first year out there, I see the list of iPads that were not recovered, I think there were 13 on the list. Usually when iPads are not, they don't turn them at the end of the year, we try to follow up with a letter, a phone call, and then we do a police report, and then we also record it in, into Destiny, so that we know, you know, that we have a record of it. We try to follow up phone calls. The problem that we're finding is that the majority of the people who have these iPads are no longer in Citrus County. We're finding that students will leave Citrus County, leave school, and not withdraw, and the next thing, next thing we know is we get a request for records from a school in another state. And so we try to call any numbers that we have on those students to get their iPads back. Sometimes we get an answer, sometimes we get a voicemail, but we never usually get a return call. So we are trying to follow up on all of our iPads that we are missing, but usually that's the steps we take, is that once we do not get it back at the end of the year, then we'll follow, we'll start with a letter, phone calls, we'll try to log those phone calls, we did not log those phone calls last year, but we are logging phone calls now that we make, all the ones that we are still trying to locate.
And is the stipulation lost/stolen? And do you know which it is, lost or stolen?
We don't, we don't know, we just don't, we know we don't have them. If we do make contact, they usually say, "We don't have it." So at that point, we don't really know where it's at. We have, I understand that we have had some located in pawn shops and got them back, but, you know, once they leave, if we don't get them back, we try to, when a student withdraws from school and the parents come in and actually withdraw them from our school, we try to collect it at that time, so that we have that iPad before they walk out the door.
I was thinking you had the stipulation stolen, would you report it to the...
Well, we reported to, we reported to the police, we do a police report on all of them anyway, whether they're considered lost or stolen, because we don't really know what it is. So the police do follow up with it as well. I know that they have things sent to pawn shops to be on the lookout, lookout for them, because on the back of the iPad, there is a big sticker that says Citrus County Schools on it, so...
And Mr. Sheffield, I'd like to say something. Our schools have the same processes in place that they do with textbooks, because when kids leave, they move, and they go away, they have pretty much the same processes. And I will tell you that our staff in schools spends hours tracking these devices, the same as they do for students who don't pay for lunches. So, and I put those together because you all see how many thousands of dollars we pay every month for students who don't pay for lunches, but they still go out and try to recoup those dollars and also recoup those devices. But when a student leaves and moves, there's not much more they can do except to do that. And I will tell you, I think it's understanding, when we find it in a pawn shop, we know it's ours, we have to pay to get it out.
I just wanted to, our procedures in to dispose of the fixed assets, if they are, after they've extenuated all possibilities of recovering it, they are required to file a report with the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office now gives it an incident number, unless they know that it is truly stolen, that they know that, you know, this student did steal it or took it to the pawn shop, then it will get a case number. But part of the procedures before we even put it on the agenda for you is that it does have to have a police report if they don't actually have the item in hand, so just so you're aware of that.
And Ms. Connors, I think you and I were talking about this, could you add something to what was being said up here?
Not really. Unless you just want me to, but it's very simple. We have 29 since 2015, and 1,070 that have been out. But we only have seven, we only have seven students that are currently still at Crystal River High School. And so grad obligation is placed on an obligation list. Students are not allowed to purchase any extracurricular tickets to dances and things until they meet their obligation. So sometimes, we get it back. Let's say the prom's coming up, or homecoming, and they want to buy a ticket, or grad bash, all of a sudden, they find the iPad, and they'll bring it in. So that's the only thing I can add.
That's a good procedure, very good procedure. And there's one other question I had, and it was about when iPad is taken, stolen, if it's your personal one, and you have, I don't know, a certain kind of...
On-line.
Yeah, yeah, an agreement with finding it, then also, there's an agreement that you turn, that can be turned off. The person who stole it can't use it anymore, because it's no way to use it. Could you explain that, Mr. Anderson, how that works? And it does work on everything or no?
I think no, it's the answer.
The iPads that we distribute do have that ability. In our mobile device management system, there's a setting called Enable Location, so we instruct schools to turn on Enable Location. And so in some cases, we've located iPads using that tool, but in other cases, if the iPad is turned off, or the battery's tied, or maybe for some other reasons, it doesn't show up. So it's not 100%, you know, foolproof, but it has helped some.
But we do use it. And my concern, again, I mean, see if we can answer this, once it's put on that list, once you've done everything at the school level to do it, then it becomes a police matter and the school level is not tracking down all these people. Is that correct?
The schools do continue to try to recover some of these items, and we have actually brought to the board, where we've brought items and said we were printing them back on. So, but once the police get the report, like I said, they have, they have made two different categories, incident, so it has an incident report and an actual case number. They all used to get case numbers, but there were so many that now it's just an incident, because that's our procedure, is that they file the police report. So unless they actually know it's stolen, then they follow up on it. You know, if they know that it is at this student's house, or for sure that it's there, they might, they follow up on it.
I appreciate y'all coming and explaining this, because it comes up every single year, so I thought, this year, we're going to explain it fully, and then we can put it to rest. Thanks for...
And Ms. Powers, something, too, that I, serving on the Technology Committee, this is always a spirited conversation about how to better address this issue, how to manage it, and it has improved, the process, it continues to improve, it continues to evolve. But the two things that it comes down to is, one, I think in Crystal River's case, which has even a longer list, I think it's only, it's less than 3%. The national average seems to be between 2.5% to 5%, so we're kind of within that norm. The other, the other challenge is what Superintendent Hemel had said, and that has to do with, we know that chasing good money, of having our administrators spend those hours and hours chasing these at some point to not be able to recover that, we're taking good money and sending it after bad. And I don't like these ever. There is, comes a point, though, in order for us to have some of these things that we're just... we're just, that we are going to continue to have in our schools, regardless of the type of device it is or, or the cost of it, it, it's going to be a cost of business. And I think what this board will continue to struggle with is, like we did with lunches, do at some point we sit there and say, "We're going to need to put a line item in there," and how do we then adjust that? We've talked about, um, insurances, and Mr. Bradshaw has explored for us various options. There's not as much flexibility, um, even the insurance companies, and we are still looking at them, but some of them that are out there, the problem is, is it's usually those that have are funding the money for those that will not pay for it. So the ones that tend to have the loss rate is higher is on the ones that aren't paying, purchasing or paying for those insurances. Um, so it, it's a struggle. I, I'm excited that everyone kind of feels like they've got skin in the game, and I think we have to continue to do that. One suggestion we've talked about, um, has to do not just with this, but believe it or not, those little charging, um, blocks and those cords, there's $40 wrapped up in those, and so we talked over and over about, you know, should we instead get, be like a pencil paper, and we let people purchase those, and we don't give them to the students, and, um, you know, maybe see if we can get a community partner to work with us for those kids that can't afford that, but, um, rather than then, you know, have, have them have some, you know, ownership into some of this, but it's a, it's a continual challenge. I am very appreciative that, I know Ms. Hemel, Mr. Mullen, in, puts great emphasis on this during the principal meetings and assistant principal meetings about, um, finding a way to recoup and reduce that number, but it's a tough number, it is a tough number to follow. So thank you for pulling it and bringing it forward.
You know, we have to be diligent in the way we track, um, our inventory, and we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on, on iPads and computer equipment, and, you know, I think the system has improved, I know it's taken seriously, and that's how we have to make sure that we're following up on those items, because nobody likes to see items lost or stolen like this, and I think it's, the system has improved, but, um, Ms. Powers, I appreciate you, you know, talking a little bit more about it. You know, we've talked about classroom sets too, I think, as an option, um, and of course, you know, you might end up taking a whole lot more than having the one-on-one if every classroom had that set.
Because you've got to be able to provide a person with a textbook that's a take-home device, a statue, so classroom sets don't work.
Well, the problem with classroom sets is not, uh, those parents who don't allow their students to have an iPad. Uh, we'll have one if there's a classroom set, and if we, you know, see that as a challenge, if that's going to continue to increase, hopefully it's not, but then how can a teacher teach, you know, two-thirds of the class with iPads while a third of them doesn't, don't have iPads? So, you know, those are issues, um, but, you know, the byline for this discussion is that we have to make sure that we're diligent on tracking devices. All right, is there a motion? I did not, I don't think we had a motion, I think it was just a discussion. We'll take this motion and we're going to go to our public hearing.
Uh, I move to, uh, to approve, sorry, move to approve, uh, disposal of active, active sur, I'm sorry, surplus property at La Canto Middle School and La Canto High School.
Second, Crystal River High School.
I'm sorry, Crystal River High School, La Canto Middle, Crystal River High.
All right, they have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Powers, for both items Q and R, to approve the disposal of active surplus property at La Canto Middle School and at Crystal River High School. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Okay, we have a 5 o'clock public hearing, and right after the public hearing, we're going to a presentation of our National Merit Scholarship participants. But we have an advertised 5 o'clock, uh, public hearing, so at this time, I'm going to recess our regularly scheduled meeting, and I am going to open, um, the public hearing. Mr. Dixon, are you up first or...
Ms. Allegretta.
Ms. Allegretta. Item A, approve the 2018-2019 Code of Student Conduct.
Second.
Do we have any questions for, uh, Ms. Allegretta?
He did good. That was a lot to get to this point.
Okay. All right, so, um, is there a motion?
I'm going to approve the 2018-2019 Code of Student Conduct.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to approve 2018-2019 Code of Student Conduct. Is there any public comment or discussion? Once again, is there any public comment or discussion to approve the 2018-2019 Code of Student Conduct? Third and final call, is there any public comment or discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, board, is there any comment? Okay, all those in favor?
I'm very excited for the word.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Mr. Dixon.
Yes, good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
I have five final public hearings this evening for policies. Uh, the first one is a revision to policy 2.26, School Improvement in Education. The revisions include section 1, 2, and 4, and a citation, which is School and District Accountability. Public hearing.
Okay, is there a motion for item B?
I'm going to re-adopt this policy, revision to policy 2.26, School Improvement in Education Accountability.
Second. All right, motion by Ms. Count, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve and adopt the revision of policy 2.26, School Improvement and Education Accountability. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on the motion, item B? Is there any public comment on the motion to approve and adopt revision of policy 2.26, School Improvement and Education Accountability? Okay, seeing none, board, is there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, see, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Now, the next item is a revision to policy 4.10, the curriculum. Uh, revisions were made to section 4, and these were required revisions.
I'm going to approve the revision of policy 4.10, the curriculum.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to approve and adopt the revision of policy 4.10, the curriculum. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment to approve and adopt revision of policy 4.10, the curriculum? It's my third and final call, any comment to approve and adopt revision of policy 4.10, the curriculum? Okay, we're going to be seeing none, is there any other comment or questions about it? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
And then item D is a new policy, 5.202, post-secondary enrollment programs.
I'm going to accept policy 5.202 in post-secondary enrollment programs.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Count, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve and adopt the new policy 5.202, post-secondary enrollment programs. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on the motion? Is there any public comment on the motion to approve and adopt the new policy 5.202, post-secondary enrollment programs? Okay, seeing none, board members, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
And the final two, E and F, are to update, uh, existing policies to include new reference material. The first one is a revision to policy 5.60, student injuries. It just adds the Florida Department of Health's emergency guidelines for schools.
I'm going to approve the revision of policy 5.60, student injuries.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve and adopt revision of policy 5.60, student injuries. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on item D, on the motion, on item D, excuse me, the motion? Last call, is there any public comment to approve and adopt revision of policy 5.60, student injuries? Okay, seeing none, board members, any questions or discussion?
You pulled up the line, you, they didn't understand.
Very good. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0.
And the final item F is a revision of policy 5.61, student illness, again, to update the policy to include the reference to the Florida Department of Health's emergency guidelines for schools.
I'm going to motion that we approve, policy changes to 5.61, student illness.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Count, second by Ms. Powers, to approve and adopt revision of policy 5.61, student illness. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on the motion? Is there any public comment to approve and adopt revision of policy 5.61, student illness? All right, seeing none, board members, any questions?
Comments? Aye.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, thank you, policy updates.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Okay, we're going to move next to, uh, print to our A presentation, um, of our National Merit Scholarship participants, Ms. Powers.
Some of my favorite, um, jobs, part of my job is to recognize our National Merit Scholarship, um, recipients. So the National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. Now approximately 1.5 million high school students entered this program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, also known as the PSAT and MSQT, during their junior year last year. In September of this school year, students were notified if they qualified as a commended student or a semifinalist, based on how they performed on the PSAT or MSQT. Only 34,000 approximately students of the 1.5 million entrants received letters of commendation in recognition of their outstanding academic promise. Now although commended students do not continue in the competition for National Merit Scholarships, some of these students do become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses and are recognized as being in the top 2% of U.S. seniors. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our commended students for the 18-19 school year. So when I call your name, if you can come up here and stay up here, please, um, yes, if you want to come up and help pass these out, that'd be great. First one goes to Jackie Berry, Beery, I'm sorry. And he has quite a singing voice too. Now we did have one student who was notified that he qualified as a semifinalist, which meant he was among the top 16,000 U.S. seniors. Semifinalists are the highest scoring entrance in each state. To be considered for a National Merit Scholarship, semifinalists must advance to finalist standing in the competition and are evaluated on their academic record, information about the school's curriculum and grading system, two sets of test scores to confirm reliability, a school's official's written recommendation, information about the student's activities and leadership, and the finalist's own essay. So in February, we were notified that our one semifinalist did advance to finalist standing, placing him with the top 1% of U.S. seniors. Please join me in congratulating our National Merit finalist, Camden Powers. I'd also like to take this time to also thank Mr. Derek Bitner, who plays a big piece in progress monitoring these students and making sure we are all, you know, staying with this process, so we definitely thank you, Mr. Bitner.
Ms. Brown, will you get there, Mr. Bitner? Let me get yours.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you all for coming. We know you had testing today, I hope it will well for all of you. I know most of you are in the IB program, but we certainly appreciate the hard work and effort that you put in and help our program shine, um, and so thank you, and thank the parents too that are here. Any other comments, board members?
I'm just going to read the S. I sleep.
All right, um, we are going to go to Human Resources, and then I'm going to, we're going to take a five-minute recess after HR to talk about the risk management program. So, Ms. Twain, can you come forward, please?
Good afternoon. I'm asking the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Golden Run.
Approval?
Second.
Hey, surprise.
All right, we have a motion by, I'm sorry, Ms. Bryant, was that you, and second by Ms. Count, to approve, um, the Golden Run, the instructional support recommendations. Is there any discussion or comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, Ms. Hemel did recognize, I did miss one of the bid items on the, um, the contract for the copiers, um, which, I believe that's now. Okay, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, um, so we are on, um, item seven, finance, the bids, we have a bid here to approve the Cannon, um, contract to Sissine's Business Solutions.
Good afternoon. I would like to ask you to approve Citrus County School Board Bid Number 2018-39P, ENI Cooperative, Cannon, RFP 0683225, Contract Number CNR01365, serviced by Sissine's Business Solutions.
We can't repeat that, can we? We just say, we, we move to approve.
Ask Mr. Bradshaw that.
What was that?
If they can just say, "We want to approve," what she said.
We can't repeat all that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Powers, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the, uh, bid to Sissine's Business Solutions. Is there any discussion?
Okay, now we're listening, attorneys. I do, there's only one part in this I want to make you aware of, um, actually, they were very tough negotiators, they took up until about yesterday at 5 o'clock before they could pitch a major settlement, and I thought statute totally might have been there, but one, one part that I do want to make you aware of, Cannon, CFS, which is kind of Cannon Financial Services, um, is the leasing corporation, they're the ones that own machines and are leasing them to us, and there's the, it says municipal lease agreement at the top of it, but that's what they use for any type of government, and I'll draw your, uh, attention on page one to, uh, my new, um, you know, type of typing that is paragraph 10 indemnity, and it is, you'll have to read it in a couple of different places, but I'll just quickly read how it will be, because there's an indemnity to that, which would say... That would end up reading, uh, "To the extent permitted by law, including the benefits of Florida Statute 768-028," which that's the sovereign immunity statute, uh, that we enjoy. portion is concerned, that's a risk that we can decide whether or not you're gonna take or not. They are, they are the financing companies, so if something were to occur with a machine, I doubt that there's likely to be lawsuit filed against them. However, as he said, lawsuit filed, they didn't bring that to our attention.
So are we saying, like, somebody gets ink on their hands because the machine failed and they're allergic to the ink? That, I mean, is that kind of, I mean, that's kind of what, odd?
And they get sued.
And they get sued?
And to the extent that we're required to, for sovereign immunity, we have to identify all those forms. It's really a one-way, inevitable. I can't get to delete it, I can't get to modify it, I just don't get that, so that is a choice in the job.
So even, Mr. Bradshaw, in the first page on the indemnity, where we do spell out the school board's liability under the law.
That is with Sissine's, who is the servicing company, and on the lines. There are actually two agreements in here. There's not two agreements, but there's two different parties. You have Sissine's Business Solutions, who is basically the people that we are leasing the equipment from, who bring the equipment, service the equipment, install the equipment, work with our technology department to make sure that everything is up and running, go through that entire process. And Cannon is basically the financing company. And since they're, they're machines, they have certain security rights in the machines. So, you know, which is why, you know, it took me a while to get Sissine's to put some of that in there, but, you know, it's like, we're not doing, they're, personally, I think, from a legal standpoint, I don't think you'd have more of an issue with liability in regards to Sissine's, they're on the ground here, and Cannon Financial, which is in Jersey. They're basically, but I need to point that out to you as a business company.
Okay, you know, when I looked at this, and when I first saw it, I mean, one of the things that concerned me was the start date was on verbal approval. And I guess, you know, seeing that this is a five-year contract, I guess, are we still going to have a date when somebody verbally approves it that the five years starts?
I think the date starts when the machines are delivered and on, I want to put it right there, sorry, machine on. There is a certificate of acceptance on, I think it's going to be on page one or two, so this is on third or fourth page back, and that, when we sign that, that is stating that we have accepted the machines, we've accepted that they are according order, you know, to them, you know, to Mr. Chamberlain, the technology department, or whatever to go through, make sure everything's up and running and look the way they are, and that's what there is. There is a non-appropriations clause contained in here, which means that we don't have, you have to be Cannon, you have to apply to the contract, without having a 30-day, either like 30-day termination clause, or a non-appropriations clause that says that we have to find everything.
And now, you know, I did look into some of these things. I mean, why we're here is because our existing contract is getting ready to expire. And while I also understand that, you know, when you change out of copiers, it's a big deal, or at least in my experience where I worked, it's a big deal, because there's a lot of people that use the copiers on a regular basis that can get quite frustrating. So I want some guarantees here, that what we're getting is gonna be at least of what we already have, but hopefully better, and I've been told that these are high-quality machines. But have we vetted this to make sure it's gonna fit with, within our framework, and our network, and all those things? I mean, I want to make sure we're making a good decision, so that, you know, we don't get a lot of angry people about how things weren't put together right.
Yes, we did visit each of the schools to look at their specific needs, and we did meet with the school administration to review what they have currently and what they receive from us. Almost every case, they're getting one of those same machines, as far as the same.
And I was trying to say that this, we've spent through this about every five years. Look, we probably, as superintendent, I've probably witnessed this about 10 times, for different places, so.
What did you do before this, like?
And I'm very familiar with the transition of it. And I know Stephen has been at all the schools, I know they've talked to them, but I will tell you, there'll always be somebody that's got a copy, there'll always be one down, and you need something at the last minute. But I know that they've been out, they've worked with staff, they've talked to some of the, the staff out in schools, and there'll be a transition time, when they'll take one out, and Steve's got a calendar, when they're going out and work on training, it'll be a whole process. But trust me, it's been done several times, and under Steve's watch also.
And our copiers aren't really just copiers, right? They're scanners, they're documented, you know, platforms.
They're function.
Yeah. It's.
Lots of function.
Tax machine.
And so what did you, what process did your committee go through to pick out the Cannon? Obviously, there's other brands and stuff, so obviously you were.
We entertained six vendors, had them each come in and provide a proposal of their basic machines, gearing what we currently have in place, so we could get a comparison of the cost. We also had a questionnaire for each of them to complete, to get answers as far as their service, their service guarantees, and their experiences. We also got references from each of theirs. And then we scored the six vendors, and Sissine's came out of the high school.
And I was told that their customer service is strong. Would you agree with that? Or better than what we've experienced? What, what can you tell us about customer service?
We've got a lot of positive feedback from their customers, one of those is the IB County Sheriff's Department, another is University Central Florida, Dewell County School District, and they also have less than 10,000 persons.
The only thing I was gonna say is, we continue to try and be paperless. I say try, because it is hard, it really is hard. I mean, I, I try and not make as many copies, but it's just inevitable. But is there, you know, are we seeing some reduction? I know we have less and less smaller printers around, we tried to minimize that, other than where, you know, people have begged and cried, and you and Doc have finally relinquished. But are we, are we reducing some of our paper, you know, requirements or total?
I think in some cases we're reducing, in other cases we're increasing. Since we have a lot of things electronic now, so people still have a hard time.
Yeah. That's what I kind of figured, that's, that's what it seems to be.
Seems to be a trade-off.
It happens because we're adopting textbooks, and then a lot of things have to be replaced in teacher's classrooms, because we got the textbooks, and that requires a good copy machine that usually breaks down right if you're trying to copy finalists ages.
And, Mr. Bradshaw, you can might help with this, too, though. The existing copy machines that we have are going to be, their hard drives are gonna be scrubbed, or they're gonna be disposed of properly, correct? Because I know in here, there's obviously wording.
I have the wording in this agreement, I'm assuming that Mr. Chamberlain's gonna make him scrub the hard drives, give us your ti, give us your certificate. And the only reason I know about this is because I just swapped out my copy machines at my office, and made them give me a certificate saying they scrubbed my, scrubbed the hard drives in there, so that's why I wanted to, in this contract, but I'm.
Yes, sir, we have two options, we can have them certified with this, or we can actually purchase them. We apply it after we certify.
With the existing customer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any other questions? Alright, we do have a motion on the floor.
Need a second?
No, we already have a second as well. All those in favor, I'm sorry, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion passes five zero. Okay, we do have a public comment time at five, we're a little past it, because we're in that discussion, but there was a public comment at 5:15. Is there any cards? Any cards?
No.
No cards? Okay, we might want to come make public comment at this time. We will have another time for public comment at the end of the meeting. Let me just check here where we are.
Before Ms. Wilson leaves, she can update you on the budget now, right at the end of the meeting, whenever you prefer.
If that's all she's waiting for, I can wait. Do you want to do the budget?
Is that alright with yous?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll take a break after this.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Alright, so, just wanted to give you an update of where we're at, where we're going. Right now, after we posted all of March, and you have, you had March financials in your packet, the projection, this is the projection that we have of where we are going to end the end of this year. We have taken into consideration the commitment we made to the sheriff's office for the, the extra five officers for the remainder of the year, additional expenses that have come into play, additional savings that have come into play with vacancies and long-term subs. And right now, we're looking at about a 4.47% fund balance. And this is a projection, we still do have April, May, and June expenses to post. If you looked at your financials, we have about 80% of the revenues come in, we only have expense, about 65% of the expenses. So, as of this moment, we look really good, but based on talking to the departments and what they're going to need for the end of the year, this is where I'm projecting we'll end. Okay, so what, what has happened so?
Ms. Wilson, that was, by the way, just through the end of June, though.
That was for the end of, yes, this fiscal year, 1718, this is where I project.
It doesn't take anything into consideration for next year, the fund balance or any of that?
No, sir.
Okay.
We're getting there. So, this is, this is where we've been. We're going on a little journey here, so this is where we've been. We had our administrators meeting with all the administrators, they prepared their budgets, we met individually, Mr. Hebert, Mr. Bishop, Mr. or Dr. Hebert, excuse me, and Mr. Mullen, and we met with those individual departments to discuss their needs. I updated you at the meeting last month. HR pushed over, we call it a push, because they push it from the HR side to the finance side, what positions we had are open and filled, and with the warm bodies that are in there, and the vacant positions that are there, that gets pushed over to the finance side. We do that five times during the budgeting process. We do it once a month, because personnel changes continually for next year. The budget was entered into Skyward, and it was presented to Ms. Hemel the end of last month, which we're now presenting this to you. Alright, I just wanted to recap the FESP, what we were given in our final conference report, our millage is going down 0.236, even though our taxable value is going up.
Could you go back one slide there, please? I just didn't, I haven't seen that bottom one. Yes. So taxable value, as typically happens, when the taxable value, assessed value goes up, our millage rate is adjusted downward?
Yes.
Because we got 47 cents.
We got 47 cents on the base, you know?
That's for our base student allocation, yes. Forward?
Come spend a dollar more.
Alright, this is the listing of the categoricals and the restricted funds that we were given that they're allocating to us this year. This is the, the final summation of everything. As you can see, our required local effort, we are going to, according to this, receive $276,000 less than this year. Even though our property values went up, they reduced the millage enough that we're going to receive that much less.
But that's followed the same trend we've had for at least, I know since I've been a board member, we've had reduced local required effort.
Yes, sir. So overall, we're looking at an increase of total funds per hen weighted FT of $154.43. That takes in all the restricted funds, that's your teacher leave, that's our SAEC money, all of that. Alright, things we had to consider as we were putting the budget together, and remember, this is our first stab at it, we have five times we do this. We have salary steps, we have the one-time market increase for the instructional staff, which this is the second year, the third year agreement. We have negotiations we will be in for salary increases for our support staff. Of course, school safety and mental health is at the forefront of everything right now. We still have our technology that we have to meet those requirements, our health insurance costs, FRS is increased, staffing, just filling the positions we have, and then of course, our reduction in federal title grants, Title I and IDEA, approximately half a million dollars from each is going to have to be bore by the general fund now. And those will be mostly positions. Alright, so once we put everything together and gave everybody their bare minimum that they needed, we took into consideration the contract with the amount we agreed to give the sheriff's department and everything, we're looking at 3.19% of fund balance for next year.
When you say what we've given the sheriff's department, which dollar amount are we talking about? I'm saying what you budgeted in there.
The 877,000 and continued change.
What about the previous five deputies?
That was in the previous.
That was in the previous, that was in FY 2008.
Yes.
That's right. That's what I thought, I, I'm glad, I forgot, yeah.
June 30, right, we agreed to that.
So 3.19. Our board policy, Ms. Bryant, is?
3.5.
3.5? You usually get upset once we're under four, so.
I was sweating first.
That's what I was just gonna say, she usually comes out of her chair, once it's under four.
I don't like it.
Not looking good.
No.
Alright. I'm gonna do my best. Okay, so I just put some graphical depictions in here, of course, as you can see, our revenue was exceeding expenditures, we got really close, and now the expenses are exceeding revenues again. Our fund balance took a big dive, we've built it up, and then with the proposal that we're going forward right now, it's going to be taking a decline.
Ms. Wilson, what, though, is the biggest contributing factor to that? I mean, in, in your budgeting? Because I know we, we planned a lot for a lot of this, we know we didn't get a lot from the state more.
Correct.
And, but what, is there, is there one particular thing that's contributing more than another?
I would have to say probably a lot, a big part of it is the decrease in federal funds. The amount we agreed to give the sheriff's office is funded, that, but we are giving them everything we have, pretty much. So, the raises are in there, that took a big hit this past year, it's taking a big hit next year, the agreed teacher increases, and then the reduction in Title, Title I and IDEA funding mostly, that's over a million dollars right there. Alright, so where, where do we go, what's next on the journey? I'm updating you today, Friday, another HR push, we'll come over to finance, we'll work on those numbers, we'll mush them, we'll meet with the departments, we'll say, okay, what can you live with, what can you live without, you know, this is where we're at. We'll present a budget back to Ms. Hemel the beginning of June, and update you at the June board meeting where we are after the next HR push. And of course, a lot of positions have changed, and people resigned, and all the administrators are moving around. Then, after that meeting, after that, after that budget update, then we'll have a third HR push, we'll update you again the end of June. The property appraiser has to certify the taxable value, and the Department of Education will recompute the required local effort on July 1. July 10, at that board meeting, you will approve to advertise the tentative budget, which it'll go in the paper the end of July. We'll get another HR push after you approve to advertise. We cross our fingers, the DOE gets us that second calculation before we have to advertise, and then the budget will be advertised on July 28. We are having a workshop on the 31st, which is the 5th. Then, after that meeting, after that, after that budget update, then we'll have a third HR push, we'll update you again the end of June. The property appraiser has to certify the taxable value, and the Department of Education will recompute the required local effort on July 1. July 10th, at that board meeting, you will approve to advertise the tentative budget, which it'll go on the paper the end of July. We'll get another HR push after you approve to advertise. We cross our fingers, the DOE gets us that second calculation before we have to advertise, and then the budget will be advertised on July 28. We are having a workshop on the 31st, which is the fifth Tuesday of July, to vote on the tentative budget. And this is required for our TRIM to have this approved tentative budget. We'll have one last push over to HR on August 10th, which hopefully, pretty much everybody's in place by then, schools started, we know who's where and what the salaries are, and everybody's in place for the most part. And then the final budget will come to you on September 11th, and once you approve it, I will submit it to the DOE. So that's where we are, and this is where we're going. This is step one. Any questions at this time?
What can we do to get our fund balance back up? It's my question.
Well?
One of two choices, decrease spending, increase revenue.
At the front, they've been working with different departments, and it's totally different, so what they have to do is...
And as a reminder, Ms. Hemel, if I recall, you, you pretty much start with zero-based budgeting with every year anyway, and you have routinely started to say, we have a brand-new school district starting day one, what's it going to cost me to operate? Is that pretty much still the...
And that's what, to that, to say, it's, you know, probably go back and say, what can you live without?
That's where we are right now.
I mean, it'll be, it will, and it'll be personnel, and it'll be programs, I mean, that's all it is.
It's all they say.
All right, Ms. Wilson, thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess.